I will now call to order the regular board of education meeting for Chico Unified School District for October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. It is five oh two P M., and we will be going into closed session at this time. Seeing that there is no public comment, we'll go into closed session and return to open session at six P M. Thank you.
It's like we all know how to behave in a classroom. Awesome, great. Well, let's get started. Welcome back to open session. The board has been in closed session since 5:00 P.M. This is the regular board meeting for Chico Unified School District for October 18th, 2023. It is now 6:06 P.M. and we will convene with open session. The board took no action during closed session and with that we will move on to item 3.3, which is the flag salute. So please stand. Alrighty, moving on to student reports.
So like we always do at our regular board meetings, we are going to start off with some student reports. And I would like to introduce Jessica Camp from Marsh. And I see students ready right up in the front of the room. So this is gonna be fun.
Well, I will say you're definitely in for a treat. I don't get to get up here often so I would just like to thank a few people. First of all, I want to thank our community for passing Prop 28 that went to support our music education. That allowed us to purchase some additional instruments as well as repair some instruments that were in desperate need. So thank you for that. You know, the amazing thing about music is it's really something that is super inclusive and really takes down the barriers when allowing students to explore and learn. And it is often shown in studies that music also helps with academic performance because it really is like learning another language. And tonight, I am so excited to introduce to you our Marsh Gators and they are going to be doing some drumming from our drumming class.
Jessica, are these the new instruments we bought?
Your money went to a much better cause but I will tell you, students start off on these and they also get to use the much larger drums in our concert performances.
Hello, my name is Trey Petty and I am pleased to introduce our Marsh drumming class. In our class, we learn the basics of reading rhythm, drum technique, and perform etiquette. We are excited to perform three songs for you this evening. Our first song is a duet called Sideways.
My name is Erin Meadows and I would like to introduce our second song. It is another duet called Two-Headed Monster.
My name is Kate McGibben and on behalf of our class, I would like to thank our principal Jessica Camp for inviting us to perform tonight. And to the Chico Unified School District Board of Directors for allowing us to do so. Thank you, everyone in the audience, for letting us share our hard work in progress. Our final song uses an electric backing track and it is called Superbeat. I hope you enjoy and have a lovely evening. I would like to introduce our members Trey, JJ, William, Jasper, Erin, and me, Kate. Do you have any questions? Mr. King and Mr. Crispino and Jessica Camp.
Can we ask for some of our favorite songs and you guys could play them for us maybe?
Thank you guys very much. Excellent presentation. Thank you, Mr. King. You can come back anytime. That was great. Okay, while they are clearing out, I'm going to invite up Emma Wilson Principal Courtney Conley.
I know, it's dangerous.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for having us tonight. We're super excited. We have our third grade students and team here tonight to present about a longstanding tradition at Emma Wilson. I won't spoil any of the surprises. I'm going to invite my third day, your third grade team to come up. And students, come on up. And I'll let them introduce themselves and explain a little bit about what we do.
I'm just gonna bend down here.
Everybody's elementary Scott size tonight.
Good evening. Thank you guys so much for having us. We are third grade representatives of Emma Wilson Elementary School. Third grade focuses heavily on Butte County history. And every year, we do a month-long thematic unit on the Maidu tribe of Butte County. Students have been learning about pre-Gold Rush era clothing, homes, artifacts, and tools. They've also been studying the culture, beliefs, and customs of the Maidu tribe, both past and present. We have a few students here tonight that would like to share some of their in-class creations with you. Tomorrow night, all of our third grade classes will have a Maidu museum night in our classrooms where families are welcome to come to school from 6:00 to 6:30 PM to see their students' learning come to life. We would love if you would attend.
Hi, my name is Aubrey and I'm going to share with, wait. Hi, my name is Aubrey and I'm going to share with you about the Maidu's clothing. In the summer, the Maidu wore a few pieces of clothing. The men wore breech cloth made from buckskin or wire grass. The women wore aprons made from grass, willow, buckskin, or shredded bark. Both men and women wore deer skin moccasins. In the winter, the Maidu wore more clothing to keep warm. They wore deer skin leggings and fur, and the fur was toward, turned toward their legs for warmth. They also wore fur robes and woven duck or goose feather blankets. The Maidu stuffed their moccasins with grass to keep their feet warm and dry. Women wore basket hats during ceremonies and special gatherings. Men put their hair in hairnets made from plant fibers. The men also painted their bodies for these events. Some Maidu had tattoos on their faces and upper body. They also wore belts, headbands, made from feathers. Both men and women had long hair. They also wore jewelry such as necklaces, bracelets, and anklets. The jewelry was made from bone, shell, feathers, and wood. Here are some examples of Maidu doll dress for summer and winter. This one is summer and this one is winter.
Hi, my name is Paige and I'm going to share with you about the Maidu's homes. The Maidu built different kinds of homes depending on the season. The mountain Maidu lived in bark-covered houses. To build these homes, the Maidu made a circular frame of upright poles. Then they cut large slabs of redwood or cedar bark. They tied the bark to the frame. Then they covered the door with animal fur. In the summer, these huboes kept out the hot sun and allowed the early morning or late night breezes to cool the inside. And then the Maidu who lived in the base of the mountains lived in earthen homes. To build these homes, the Maidu first dug a hole in the ground. Then they built a wooden frame over the hole. They covered the frame with woven tulle mats or grass. They, then they packed earth on top of the mats. This allowed them to stay warm and dry during the rainy seasons. Families would enter these homes through the smoke hole at the top of the dome. Here are some examples of the earthen home and the huboes. I built an earthen home. This one's an earthen home and this one's a hubo.
Hi, my name is Nola and I'm going to share with you one of the Maidu's tools. Twice a year, salmon come up into the streams and rivers to lay eggs. During this time, there are lots of salmon in the water. It was the best time for the Maidu to trap, net, or spear lots of fish. The problem with catching so many fish at once is that they can't all be eaten. There are just too many. The Maidu have a way of keeping the meat fresh so they could use it later in the year. They save the fish by drying it out. To dry the fish, first the Maidu cut the fish into big pieces. The pieces were put on drying racks. Each rack was made out of wooden poles tied together with grass or strips of leather. The rack of fish was set up in the sunshine. The heat of the sun was made out of, sun made all of the water in the meat disappear. Sometimes the heat and smoke of the fire was used to help dry the meat. The heat cooked the water up of the meat. And the smoke of a fire was used to help dry the meat. The heat, when the meat was all dried out, the pieces were packed on a rock and pounded. They were pounded and pounded until all that was left was the meat powder. Meat powder, put into baskets and stored until the Maidu wanted it. Here's a model of the drying rack I built.
Just as a testament to how far our teachers will go, when preparing for lessons, Alicia did go up. Where was it that you? And in harvesting some of the wood for the, for the, for the structures, she was attacked by a swarm of ground wasps. So we appreciate the dedication. Do you have any questions for us?
How many members of the local Maidu tribe actually come in person to talk about some of this stuff?
I have a student whose family is a tribal member and their uncle is going to Zoom with us on Monday. He lives in Washington. Every year, we usually have at least, you know, a handful of students that have some ties to the Machu Picchu tribe. And so we do try and bring the families in as experts.
And then depending on the year, Chico State has.
You want to use the microphone? We can't hear the responses.
Also, every year, depending on what resources are available. Last year, we went on a field trip to Chico State because in one of their museums, they had some resources. Pre-campfire, we used to go to the Golden Nugget Museum and they had a whole Maidu day there. So every year, it looks a little bit different, but we do try to incorporate the Maidu tribe as well.
If one of you wants to reach out to me, I have, I know an old woman here in town who is a Maidu and grew up on Maidu community in the mountains. So I'd be happy to put you in touch with her and I'd like to think she might want to come talk to the class.
Thank you so much. I'll send you an email tomorrow.
And I just want to compliment your students on their public speaking skills. It is tough to get up in front of an audience and be livestreamed and you get, they were just wonderful public speakers. Thank you so much.
Very proud of you girls. You did a great job. Thank you again for giving us some time tonight.
So I'm going to do a quick transition here while we have Courtney at the microphone. Okay. She'll be right back.
And so thank you again. We have the opportunity tonight to honor one of our staff members for the superintendent's award. Again, I'm Courtney Conley, the principal at Emma Wilson. This is Antonia Rothie. She is our office manager. And she's going to be helping me share some kind words about our targeted case manager, Miriam. Miriam, would you like to join us up here? We're lucky we got her here tonight. She, she almost, she almost tricked me. So we really appreciate the time and opportunity to honor one of our most loved and appreciated people on campus at Emma Wilson, Miriam Baldavid. As you may know, over the last five years, we've had a lot of transition in our front office. And Miriam has been the constant. She's been the consistency that keeps the, keeps the school running. We joke about her institutional knowledge because she's been there longer than any of us. And she's been there the whole time. But she really is the person that holds the knowledge of what we've done, what's worked, what hasn't worked, what we should never do again. And she always comes to the table with ideas about how we can make things better. She really is focused on, she's solution-focused all the time. Many staff, families, and students wanted to contribute thoughts and stories about how important Miriam is to our school, family, and our school community.
Miriam is a gift to our school site. Her humble, quiet, welcoming, heartfelt, and efficient work behind the scenes is an amazing support for our students and families.
She truly cares about our staff and students. She provides incentives for students to be at school, to be on time, or even to complete tasks at home. She is a role model and a mentor for many of our students.
She magically delivers, sorry. She magically delivers snacks to classrooms for hungry students in need, the stray alarm clock for a student to independently get to school, bus passes, rides, holiday gifts, clothes, help connecting with medical supports. She creates charts for parents to help with home routines and even provides a kind listening ear for parents who need support with all of the home things that ensure success at school.
One time, she actually furnished a complete apartment for a family that was just transitioning onto their, to, in their, on their own. She's that good. She really, she really, really dug into our resources at school and, and it was, it was awesome.
Miriam is such a wealth of knowledge. She always has the answer to everything. Not sure how she does it, but she does.
And being the primary Spanish, Spanish translator at school, she has really become a pillar to our Spanish-speaking families at school. She has become the connection for them to really feel connected, to really feel a part of the school community.
Our team is so appreciative of her knowledge of special education. She has been an invaluable, invaluable resource when helping our Spanish-speaking families learn about their child's IEP.
She is great at diffusing tense situations and really willing to reach out to families and help them with any needs they have. We are so fortunate to have such an amazing colleague and friend at Emma Wilson.
If anyone embodies the heart of Emma Wilson, it's Miriam. She is such a fabulous advocate for our students and their families. She goes above and beyond to break down barriers for parents, bridging the home-to-school connection for those who have not had positive experiences with education.
Miriam's door is always open. And if it's not, I just knock on the wall because we share a wall. She has the biggest heart and she approaches situations with a genuine compassion and thoughtfulness. She is quick to jump in with impactful solutions and ways to help families in need of support. And she is just always a safe space to go to for advice or for a laugh.
Miriam is one of the most hardworking, caring, compassionate, thoughtful, generous, empathetic, and kind people I know. We are so blessed to have her as a part of our Emma Wilson team.
And from families, Miriam makes us feel welcome at school. She's helped us get the things we need to help our children.
We appreciate Ms. Miriam. When we were new at Emma Wilson, she made us feel like we were at home.
And from students, Ms. Miriam makes it fun to be at school. She is my favorite person.
When we really need help, we go to Ms. Miriam. I love it when she is in the lunchbox and I love hanging out with her while I wait for the bus.
Students, families, and staff all count on Miriam for a friendly smile, empathy, knowledge, and practical solutions. Miriam truly makes the world, including Emma Wilson, a better place. I mean, she's just incredible.
In addition to taking care of and supporting 77 staff members, 617 students, and countless families each year, she is also an amazing wife, daughter, granddaughter, sister, friend, and mother.
And on a closing note, dear, dear mom, my mom is kind. She makes me pancakes. She reads stories at night. I love my mom. Love Angelo. We all love you, Miriam. You're wonderful and we couldn't do it without you. The, the things that we received from people, so I knew you didn't want me to talk all night, but I could if, if you'd let me. Thank you so much. Thank you. We appreciate you.
If I might ask, how many years have you been at Emma, Miriam?
I've been at Emma seven years.
I'm sorry, how many?
Seven.
Oh, thank you.
It's like they knew exactly how long to make their spiel before, to make her, to make her tear up. She almost made it.
Okay. Well, while we're spreading good news, I'd next like to invite up Shannon Payne.
Thanks, Phil, for the mic raise. For those of us who are a little taller. Good evening, board, Ms. Daley and CUSD community. We're always trying to trick our staff members into coming here because as you know, teachers in a general rule are humble and they don't always like to be celebrated publicly. So I got away with it all the way until Mrs. Lumberg saw all her friends. So I'm going to invite Shelby up here because she's not mad at me anymore. I could talk about Shelby Lumberg for a hundred years, but I'm going to keep it quick. It's an honor to celebrate Shelby Lumberg tonight, who we tricked into coming because she thought she was going to be speaking about language arts instruction in kindergarten. She's passionate about it. I want to start with, she is truly one of the humblest teachers that I know. I've worked with many teachers over the years and she is truly amazing at what she does. And I have the highest respect for kindergarten teachers because that's where it all begins for our children. She's a 16-year veteran. I could be off by a year or two. She did a few of those years in East LA. And then she came to Citrus and she's been at Citrus for 13 years teaching kindergarten. No other grade creates the impression on a family that kindergarten does. This is the, this impression is critical to the relationship between the school and the family for years to come. Shelby embodies the epitome of relationship building, compassion, warmth in her classroom that is needed to form deep bonds with each family she supports in her room. With a firm, but gentle demeanor and genuine love for her young learners, she creates a nurturing environment where each child feels valued and understood. Shelby, quite simply said, is a warm demander. Skillfully balancing high expectations with empathy and encouragement, motivating her students to strive for excellence in their academic and personal growth, which we know there is a lot of in kindergarten. Her instructional approach is a testament to her dedication to providing top-tier education to all learners as she tailors lessons to meet each of the diverse needs of her students, all while fostering a love for learning from the very first day they step into her kindergarten classroom. Beyond the classroom, Mrs. Lumberg is a deeply community-oriented person. She is always engaging parents to create a more supportive network for her parent, for students and our school. Beyond the classroom, Shelby builds our Citrus community through her acts of service to our PTA and as our site union representative. She is in fact our number one recruiter for parents on the PTA board. Yes. I don't know what we would do without Shelby in this position. But if you're a parent in Shelby Lumberg's kindergarten class, she's got work for you. Shelby acts as a compass for our school. As one of the longest tenured teachers at Citrus, she is deeply respected by all. She guides both students and fellow educators, myself as an administrator, with her wisdom, experience and dedication to the betterment of her Citrus community and her family. And I will say she is a mother of three busy children and she still has all this to give. I have no idea where she comes up with it all. Shelby's impact reaches far beyond the walls of her classroom at Citrus and I am incredibly grateful to work with you every day. Thanks, Shelby.
And I will turn it back over to you, Madam President.
All right. Thank you. That was a lot. Congrats on the awards. We are doing such good work out there. We as in everybody else. I'm just here to help run the meetings. I'm really grateful, I just am going to take this time for a second, to our district and the elementary schools. As a parent who is now looking at putting my kid in school next year for TK, it's hitting me really hard at how hard of a decision I have to make for my kid and how impressed I am with everybody that works in this district. So I appreciate all that you do, especially coming from a growing up mother. And with that, number six is announcements. With, with that comment, next week on Tuesday, we have the TK kindergarten roundup fair. Thank you. Hopefully there's information in everybody's hands about that. Who do have kiddos going into TK or kindergarten next year? It's a good opportunity to meet and greet all the folks from all the schools and get a feel for what your kiddo's going to be entering into next year. Are there any other announcements from board members this evening? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to number seven, items from the floor. Items number floor is for speakers from the public who wish to address the board regarding a topic that is not currently agendized this evening. At this time, we'll take public comment from speakers who wish to address the board for, for those topics that are not agendized. Lots to celebrate out there. As a reminder, speakers have three minutes to address the board and a bell will ring at 30 seconds, which is an indication that you have that much time to wrap up your thoughts. And then at the end of the three minutes, your time is up. So we do have four folks signed up for items from the floor this evening. We have a student and so I will call that person up first and then three more folks. So up first would be Ida Patino, followed by Carrie Park.
Hi, my name is Ida Patino. I'm a fourth grader at Rosedale. So last week we were lining up for recess when the boy in front of me was pulling his eyes back and badly imitating the Japanese and Chinese language and saying, "I'm a pretty Japanese girl." Another time we were reading something about indigenous peoples when a girl asked, "I wonder what their language sounds like?" Probably something like, some other kid responded, before making up a bunch of nonsensical words. If you're wondering what I'm getting at or what my point is, it's that these kids aren't just white and honestly, not many of them are even trying to be mean. You see, many kids don't know what racism is and don't know what the impact on their, their words may have on their classmates. A lot of kids don't or just can't understand the difference between fun and games and racism, which is why I propose anti-racist education. Now, my class and I'm pretty sure all of the other fourth grade classes do something called Second Step. It's where twice a month, the counselor comes in and talks about how to navigate your feelings and how to stand up to bullies, stuff like that. Well, one thing that they never talked about is racism. Now, I get that some parents might argue, but this would just teach about how to avoid accidentally hurting someone's feelings. In Second Step, they use the word racism sometimes, but they never actually define it or explain how to avoid it. I'm here to tell, today on my, on behalf of my classmates at Rosedale, asking you, all elected representatives, to invest in or provide anti-racist education to all K to 12 students in our district. I want schools to be a safe place for everyone, especially the BIPOC students who seem to be the butt of these racist jokes. Freedom, without being judged by things we simply cannot control, their skin hue, how we talk and the families we come from. Thank you for your time. I know I'm just a kid, but I hope you prioritize this and put it on your next agenda. And again, thank you.
Thank you, Ida. Up next we have Carrie Park, followed by Millie Benz.
Hello. I'm a mother to six children. My youngest four are in your district at four different schools. Three are thriving and one is barely surviving. His academic team last year recommended he attend this particular school and program in order to best support his academic and emotional needs. While he was anxious, he was also very excited to start a new chapter and meet new friends. He woke early on the first day, dressed to look his best. That was also the first day the bullying started and it has only increased. My son is African-American and transgender and the most courageous child I know. Day after day, he marches onto that school campus with his head held high, only to have kids call him names, including the N-word too many times to count. They intentionally misgender him. They've threatened multiple times to beat him up and one kid even told him he should kill himself. He frequently begs me to not let him go to school. Twice I have allowed him to stay home for mental health days. This child is smart and a critical thinker. He loves math and science. Yet I confirmed at a meeting with several administrators last week that he hasn't actually learned anything this week, this year due to the bullying. In an attempt to keep my child safe, the school has tended to move him around, isolate him in safe places like the library and other rooms where no students happen to be that period. He's missing out not only on learning, but on social aspects too. It was even suggested that I transfer him to another school within your district where he might have more allies. Moving my child on an hourly or daily basis does not solve this problem. The problem is highly significant and deeply rooted. This is not an issue of a dozen out of control bullies on one campus. This is serious hate motivated behavior, which is rampant on many campuses. I respectfully implore the board to take an unambiguous stance against hate motivated behavior across the district. Consistency and mandated action from the top will be far more successful than leaving each school to figure out their own solution. I'm speaking tonight only about my amazing son and I know firsthand, there are other parents who could stand here and share their similarly sad story about their child. As uncomfortable as it is for me to stand here in front of you all, my child deserves to have his rights fought for before he becomes a statistic. All our children have the right to be safe at school. Thank you.
I have Millie Benz next, followed by Dr. Christine Leisner.
Good evening. I'm here tonight with the NorCal Anti-Racism Coalition to follow up on requests we've made to the board and to district leadership. On August 21st, our grassroots organization sent a letter to the board requesting you to review and update Board Policy 5145.9. This policy's purpose is to protect students, families and staff members from hostility related to their identities. As our group reviewed the policy, we saw that it was lacking in a number of ways. Our group formed last spring after Chico Unified's BIPOC LCAP meetings revealed unmet needs in our community. Tonight, you're hearing about a student whose intersectional identity can be marginalized in myriad ways. He is experiencing bullying in his junior high and his administrators are struggling to find solutions. I can empathize as a former administrator. We are asking you, the board, to take action to create safe and supportive learning environments by strengthening your policy. We have provided samples that serve as models in terms of clarifying what hate motivated behavior is. The samples also explain how to respond and they show how to prevent hate, hate through evidence-based practices and ongoing training. When we met with Ms. Dalby and Ms. Robinson last month, we didn't hear a commitment to action. We heard instead that there are practices underway that will improve outcomes for students of color. While we see there are promising programs like PBIS and MTSS, we have asked the district to provide data that allows us to serve as accountability partners. We are concerned that action, specific action needs to happen to support students from marginalized communities. We've asked for this data, four months ago, we made our first request and we still haven't seen it. We wonder how can a multi-tiered system of support work towards equity when the data we are asking for is unavailable? Once again, we are asking the board to agendize this policy. We see a board with incongruent lived experiences from our own and NCAC offers our collaboration to help you work across difference. The time is now to support your staff and your students. No one should have to face hate motivated behavior without a strong system of support. Thank you.
All right. Up next is Dr. Leisner.
I'm a part of the NorCal Anti-Racist Coalition because I believe that everyone should be anti-racist. Racism hurts everyone. It's, it's a known fact that racism stifles innovation. There's a wealth of evidence that racial and ethnic diversity is beneficial to companies by enhancing creativity, reach and ingenuity. Research suggests that individuals that reflect anti-racist attitudes that encompass high levels of informed empathy, have high levels of multicultural education, more racially diverse friend groups, more support for affirmative action and high levels of cultural sensitivity. I'm here today because of the variety of stories I've heard about students, parents and even staff. Stories where non-white students have been bullied and harassed at school by their peers, their white peers torment them using hate speech. The reaction by the district administrators is to wait until the child being bullied acts out in self-protection and then the district punishes the victimized child with no repercussions to the peers using the hate speech. Or what about the non-white teachers who are afraid of punishing white students who use racial slurs against them for fear of retaliation from the district or their parents? Stories like these are heartbreaking and we need stronger policies. One, we need a zero tolerance policy for hate speech. Any child on any campus who uses racialized hate speech should be suspended. I don't care if their family is a good or decent family. It's embarrassing that smaller districts with less resources can handle this better than we can. For example, in a small school in our region, a child used a racialized slur targeting the Latinx community. The staff knew that this situation needed to be handled differently than other issues with students. The parent of the victimized child was consulted by the school administration to provide feedback about how administrators could handle the situation in order to keep the victimized student safe. This led to significant consequences for the student that used the racialized slur. At the end of the day, the student created an unsafe learning environment and having these strict consequences will allow, also set an essential boundary for parents who also use hate speech. Number two, this brings me to the second policy point. We need a robust and inclusive social justice education. We need to teach all of our kids how to be good citizens, how to have empathy for others, how to treat other human beings with respect and dignity. We need to teach our kids to be bystanders, to stand up for other peers who are being bullied and discriminated against. Three, all administrators need ongoing comprehensive training regarding anti-racist practices in the classroom. Again, racism hurts us all, all of our students. Administrators need to be equipped to handle hateful situations effectively without doing more harm or worrying if they will be punished for their actions. Thank you.
Thank you for everybody who signed up to speak. With that, we will move on to number seven, items from the floor. Sorry, number, whoa, just kidding. I'm looking at the wrong thing. Sorry. Number eight, consent calendar. Sorry? I have you signed up to speak for 9.1.1, which is the Department of Education Ethnic Studies mandate. Did you sign up for two different items? Okay. Yeah, I have you on the list for the next. Yeah, thank you. Okay, so we're on consent calendar. Are there any, is there anybody who would like to pull an item from consent for further discussion? Okay. Do we have a motion for consent?
I move the consent calendar.
Second. All right, we have a motion from Member Tennis and a second from Member Conken. We'll do a roll call vote starting. We'll do a roll call vote, starting with Mr. Lando.
Lando, aye.
Tennis, aye.
Dalby, aye.
Robinson, aye.
Conken, aye.
It's unanimous. It passes. Then, next up after that, my gosh, make sure my numbers are all. Yeah, I skipped the page already, thinking I needed to go to the next page, and the numbers were off for me. We're on number nine, our Discussion Action Calendar. We'll start with Educational Services. 9.1.1 is an informational item on the California Department of Education Ethnic Studies mandate, presented by Pedro Caldera.
How are we doing tonight? I hope everybody's doing great. Want to start off with the California Cultures Class that we have begun discussing about. Between PV and Chico High, we have five teachers from PV. You able to scroll up just the other way, please? Up, up, up. That's going down. Okay. So, we have three teachers from PV and two from Chico High, and we have been coming together approximately once a week for the past four weeks to be able to take the California Educational Ethnic Studies framework and put together a course recommendation. Please keep in mind that this course is not slated to start until the '25, '26 school year. It won't be required until the '20, '30 graduating class. So with that, we have come up with the recommendation. Right now, where we're currently at is the creation of a semester-long class encompassing four groups, if you will. And I just want to read over the course over you. This is directly from the California Department of Ed Ethnic Studies curriculum, which states "The California Cultures Course emphasizes African-American, Chicano, Chicana, Chicana X., Latino, Latino-X., Native American, and Asian American and Pacific Islander Studies." The focus on the experience of these four disciplines provide an opportunity for students to learn of the histories, cultures, struggles, and contributions to American society. Given California's diversity, the course in addition to the above disciplines can include ethnic disciplines that represent our community to include unique history, struggles, and contributions to our state and to Chico. So what's important, I think, is how the recommendations have come across from our teachers. If you look at it in terms of timeline, we're starting, they'd like to start with the Native American group that was here before us. So let's go with Unit 1, and if we can go down to the next, just keep scrolling for me. Then, we'd like to cover the Chicano, Chicana, Latino, Latina experience. Then after that, if you don't mind, thank you, right there, our Asian American and Pacific, the Pacific Islander Studies. And then finally, our African-American Studies. And so with that, please know that we are still in the process of reaching out to community members and working with our constituents out in the public to be able to get resources to be able to provide some of these units for our students and for our teachers. What are your questions?
What do you know about the, I scroll up a little bit? Sure. I know this didn't come from you. You didn't write this, did you, Mr. Caldera? You didn't like?
No, no, no. No, like I said, directly from the California Department of Ed framework.
Like, what do you know about environmental justice being on there? Why is environmental justice on the Ethnic Studies program, in your opinion?
Well, it's very complex, and you're asking for my opinion, so I will give you my opinion. There are certain environmental impacts that have compassed or have taken place throughout history and how it has affected society. You can start with agricultural homelands. You can start with any type of land, if you will, and land use and how that's been, well, how that's been used throughout history. It's very complex, and so if you're asking me with environment, I'm giving you a response that has to do with land. And there's a lot of history through that, and therefore, these four ethnic study groups and how that has materialized throughout California, and specifically for our case, how that's materialized here in Chico.
Thank you, Pedro. In looking over what was, in looking over what was going to be covered in this semester class, I was concerned, and I did express this to you, about how to get all of this stuff covered in these units in a semester class. I was very impressed with the backup materials for where the instruction was being built from. I have viewed and really enjoyed a lot of the contributions from PBS, from the, okay, the documentaries from PBS, Dr. Louis Gates, who's one of my heroes. And I wondered, have they looked, they, our teachers, the ones you've been working with, looking at this framework and believing that they can pull it together, melt it down? Would be my impression.
I do want to, and I think you and I share the same ideas here. There is a lot of content.
Yeah.
And, I mean, I say this, people do their doctorate studies in, I mean, just one single discipline that's shown up there. It's a lot of education. In the conversation with our teachers, the number-one thing that keeps popping out is are teachers able to drive through with making an impact and create understanding and create thinking about the history? And it doesn't necessarily mean taking everything, because you're not going to be able to. That's pretty much impossible. But you can take certain sections of that history and have students learn from it and grow from it. And that's really the intent of this class, is to be able to create some unity amongst the schools, create understandings within our public so that we become stronger together.
Yeah, I, the importance of this, I don't think can be overstated.
Yes, that is correct.
I am so looking forward to the impact that this course of study is going to have on. Some of the things that we are witnessing and living through right now in our schools, I think, would have been helped, avoided. Our students having more empathy and understanding for people of other races, of other cultures, that's missing, in my opinion. I'm, you know, and we need this.
I agree. We do need this, but I also do not want to discredit a lot of the work that our teachers have been doing over the years to bring about very tough situations in our history and our society. And I can honestly state, I worked with a gentleman by the name of David McKay. We started the SOLE program together, and we worked with nothing but diverse students. And, I mean, to create understanding with them, to create historical significance and provide that to our students, we weren't the only ones. Plenty of teachers across Chico High and PV that are reaching out to our students to try to connect with them through historical significance. It's just never been, like, done the way it's done across the state, so.
My next question is, at what, you know, we have different levels of coursework, of course presentation and expectations. What level is this projected to, you know, we, my concern is that all our students, no matter what their ability to read and understand, you know, what's being presented, that their level of being able to do that is going to keep them not only involved, but deep understanding this course.
Is that comment or question?
That's a comment. What level is the course?
So that course is ninth through 12th grade, A to G. Yeah.
So there, it's A to G, okay.
Yeah, I can say, just to kind of step in on that, is that right now, like health, they can take it in ninth grade, 10th, 11th, or 12th. Most of our students take it in ninth grade. They have the opportunity to take it in any one of those grade levels, but most likely a lot of them will do health and then ethnic studies as, you know, one class first semester and the second class second semester, one way or the other. I would imagine that's the way it'll play out, but again, the students have, can choose what grade level that they take the course in.
Also, do you want to state that both schools and our representatives took this course, took it through their leadership, took it to admin, took it to the registers to be able to discuss what is the best way to implement this course that's mandated by the state? So we're trying to get everybody's ideas and input into this. So as it stands right now, next semester, we'll bring forth this recommendation, it being a semester-long class.
I just need to say that I'm, I, this falls really flat for me. I am almost 0% impressed with this outline, and I don't have the words formulated well enough besides emails, the email I sent out earlier with my questions, but there seems to be no room for context about what has happened with these cultures historically that has led to what we see, how we see this play out today. The people who are present today, living their experiences, and why those experiences have been shaped by the atrocities that have been imposed upon these cultures in the past or present. And I just don't feel very supportive of this whatsoever. Looking through the linked document that goes to, like, other course approvals, I found one half semester, one semester course from Golden Valley, and even they do it better with, starting with an intro to ethnic studies and identity, and at least talking about what identity means. This outline others, to me. There's a very big aspect of othering and not taking a look at and dissecting what it means to live in a society where these cultures are all interacting, and every person's experience is based on the history of their lived experiences as a, as a culture. I don't have more to say at this time because I'm just a little bit amped up from not only our public comments that just took place, but also just feeling like there's so much more that can be put into this and done with this. Looking at it from the perspective of, you know, a mandated course, just checking the box is, I think, an atrocious approach, rather than taking the approach of what's going to be the most meaningful for our students moving forward in this society that we are living in today. And with that, I'm going to just step down for a second.
Thank you.
And I don't want to pile on, recognize this is a process, and as first draft school, it gives us some place to start.
Absolutely.
And I'm trying to walk a line here because, on the one hand, wearing the board member hat right now, but I'm also a social studies teacher, and this is really near and dear to my heart, but it does. It reads more like a survey of California, disparate California histories than an actual ethnic studies class. I think maybe instead of having each individual identity block as a unit doing something thematic instead, with an emphasis on how, like Ms. Dalby said, how all that affects us, the people living in the state today. And there's a lot to say. I would love to see how this shapes up in the future.
We're all looking forward to that. As this being an introductory class, or sorry, the beginning of this class, it's going to take our teachers some time to build up to it and to know it and understand it. There was conversations within our group that's like, okay, great, if we go from a semester-long class, how do we turn it into a year-long class to be able to go into more depth and detail? And so that's a topic of conversation that still continues, and will probably continue once the class gets started.
I know there's a lot of history to the development of this specific thing.
Yeah.
And a lot of people weighed in. There was an initial version of it that sort of got rejected and heavily revised, and, you know, one common criticism of it is that, or has been, that, you know, there's a lot of ethnic groups that aren't given as much treatment as some of the ones that are, you know? You know, the Jews come to mind, for example. Thomas Elias, who's featured in our local paper, writes about this with some frequency, actually. But that's just by way of observation. I mean, it's a big, broad topic, and I agree that this looks like a little bit like a bit of a mishmash. I thought environmental justice piece particularly kind of jumped out to me as like not necessarily a direct hit on ethnic studies, given that there are so many different ethnicities in California. I mean, we've got to be one of the most diverse places in the world, you know? And so my hope for the district would be that we would try to approach this in a global manner that would give, you know, a regard and consideration to, you know, all the different ethnicities that are, that are among us, because there are many.
Yes, there are. I can tell you that the guideline did specify to be able to answer your questions, to be able to concentrate it with the most, I guess, bigger groups of the diversity groups, if you will, within the community. So therefore, these four. There are plenty of more ethnic minorities in Chico, plenty, plenty more, and they can be interwoven within these, for example, the Hmong within these. Middle East can be interwoven, and that may be. That being said, you know, just following the California Department of Ed guidelines and framework, that's, that's where we're at.
I'm still scrolling through the very long document. I'm on 671, of the other course outlines that have been submitted and approved by CDE. And something that stands out to me is missing, besides just the intro and talk about what is identity and culture, are Muslim and Arab units. I don't see that addressed at all, and that seems like a pretty big portion of folks that are impacted, that do live, that live all around us with our society. I'm othering right now, since the way I'm speaking, I've not been able to formulate my thoughts completely. But as a very minor example, a student of mine from the past, very dear to me, reached out last year asking why aren't our schools talking about Armenian genocide? And, you know, that's a big deal. There's genocides that are happening right now, and why aren't we talking about that in the context of multiple cultures, and why some of these families have immigrated here even as recent as this year, because of those things that are happening and how that impacts us as a society and a culture? And, you know, just making sure that we're all presently aware of everybody else's lived experiences and understanding that everybody sees their experience through their own lens and understanding that we need to take that into consideration, just as citizens of this community.
I agree wholeheartedly with that statement. Granted, that you, it's going to be impossible to incorporate every single minority within this, even if it was a year-long class, even if it was a two- or three-year-long class, it'd be very difficult. What you do do as educators, you create, if you will, relationships, and you create understanding. And when you create understanding, you also create a sense of, oh my gosh, I got this in common with you. Oh my gosh, I got this in common with you. I can stand up here and as educator, I can give you thousands of examples, but let me just give you one. I was an ELD teacher at Chico High. My very first job ever in ELD was, I had a group of nine Hmong students, if you remember when our, we, you know, Chico Unified received a gift. We'll call them the Hmong population. And I had these students in my class, these awesome students, and communication was difficult. But once we got there, there was a beauty, you name it, that was just incredible. But once we got there, there was a beauty, you name it, that was just incredible. Now, and one of those things, it's called the cuarentena, which means forty days. In the Mung culture, there was forty days after a woman gave birth that they could only eat chicken. And I know that sounds like, okay, oh, that's whatever. The beauty in all that is that was the same thing in certain places of Mexico. For example, in my father's and my mom's small hometowns in Mexico, where it was the exact same thing. We're talking thousands of miles apart, yet the commonality was there. And what that created was unity. And what that also created was understanding when they started sharing commonalities within themselves. It also created a substance. We're not going to be able to hit every single thing, but we can create understanding and acceptance. And so I think that's important not to forget the focus of that because it's just impossible.
Sure. I think that that circles back a little bit to what Mr. Orlando was saying about a thematic approach. You know, it kind of opens up the opportunity to make those connections a little bit more purposeful, I guess, maybe. But I'm not a social studies person either, per se, although I am involved in politics. So I guess that makes me a little bit involved with social studies. Mr. Pennis, I can address the environmental justice thing, but we don't have to do that right here. Thanks for sharing that.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Oh, I don't know if you're done.
Oh, yeah.
I was just saying thank you.
All right. I get more opportunity to talk.
Well, you have some catching up to do because, you know, you're new. So we have to keep, keep you in the hot seat as much as we can.
Absolutely.
Keep you warmed up, Pedro.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments for now? What's, oh, go ahead.
Oh, my question comment is not a question, it's a comment. I really appreciate the input from other board members and from your additional input. This, this is complex, complicated, but so important. So all of us, keep contributing.
Yeah. And I, I would add to that, something that you had said a moment ago, Mr. Caldera, is that while this is new and, you know, we're looking at implementing a brand-new thing in our schools, we're not the only ones. And the wheel has already been created. You know, it's not like we have to reinvent the wheel either.
That is correct.
Yeah. So I would also encourage everybody to keep that in mind because it's already a slow rollout, in my opinion. So things to keep it even slower is not in, not in my best opinion.
That is why we started early. And of course, the class does not need to be implemented until 25, 26. But the goal is to start early, involve our community, and get ideas and grow from it.
So on that note, what are the next steps in terms of getting input from the community and getting another draft together?
Next step is taking your recommendations and going back to our group and having that discussion.
And please tell them I'm grateful. I'm not just here to pick them. And I hope that they don't remember me right now.
You bet. I'll do that. They're not.
It's hard work, but it takes, it takes everybody with everybody's shared perspectives to make something as meaningful as a well-rounded ethnic studies program.
We know, and when we took this on, we know it wasn't going to be easy. And we kept going back to, you know, the most impact we're going to be, get from all this is what our teachers do in the classroom. And we know that. So.
I think that yes, and the potential for greater growth in our students and better outcomes as citizens that this opportunity may provide. So the relationships in the classroom, yes, and what that, what the product of that will be is really substantial. Anybody else? Okay. Sorry.
All right. Going once, twice?
You're excused.
All right. Thank you. All right.
Just kidding. Thank you, Pedro. All right. So it is informational only. We have one speaker signed up for this item and we will call Gina Backs up at this time for public comment. I know that you know the spiel and the drill and have never been here before. I don't know what I'm doing. Okay, good evening. Well, I'm going to talk about Latinx. I'm here to request the term Latinx not to be used to refer to people from Spanish-speaking origins, as mentioned on your ethnic study course. This term is woken. Latinx is a pronoun. Latina and Latino is the correct description of our ethnicity. Here is the thing. Every Spanish noun has a specific gender, either masculine or feminine, but they can also be singular or plural. So every word for a person, place, thing, or idea is either masculine or feminine. Sorry, that's just basic grammar. Now, let's talk about how Hispanics really feel about being called Latinx, the gender-neutral term promoted by progressives to describe people of a Spanish-speaking origin in support of Hispanic LGBT members. Ruben Gallego, head of the Congressional Hispanic Coscos Campaign Arm, announced in December of 2021, his congressional staff is not allowed to use Latinx in official communications. The Miami Herald, one of the most prominent newspapers within the Hispanic community, also denounced the term and urged left-leaning activists to just drop it. Latinx has failed to gain buy-in from the people it is supposed to empower. It is time to retire it from official use, the Miami Herald editorial board wrote. And Domingo Garcia, president of the League of United Latin American Citizens, the nation's oldest Latino civil rights organizations, have instructed staff and board members to drop the word Latinx from the group's official communications. Now, let's talk about polls. According to 22% of USA adults who self-identify as Hispanic or Latino have heard of the term Latinx, and just 3% say they use it to describe themselves, Pew Research Center found in 2020. Ben Dixon and Amanda International, a Miami-based firm focusing on Latinos, found only 2% using it, a poll conducted in recent years. Listen, I don't know any abuelita, grandmother, that calls her granddaughter, hey, you, Latinx, come here, I need your rice and beans. Just doesn't happen, okay? To close my statement, I would like to remind this board that Latinos and Latinas, also called Hispanics, are people who are very proud of our culture and origins, and we want to pass that to our children. What we care is about improving our quality of life for our families and future generations, not gender-neutral terms. Thank you. All right. We will move on to item 9.2, Business Services. 9.2.1 is a discussion-action item for the 2223 unaudited actuals. Sharice.
Good evening. Sharice and I are excited to present the 2223 unaudited actuals. Perfect. All right. The unaudited actuals is actual revenues and expenditures for the year. It's not a budget. We're usually here to present budgets to you. And it's the true financial performance measurement. And this is the numbers before the annual audit is complete. We did have the auditors out to our site the first week of October. It seems like it's going well. We haven't been informed of any audit adjustments at this point. Okay, this is the actual versus funded average daily attendance slide. You guys are used to seeing this. As you know, average daily attendance is how we're funded. Our LCFF is calculated off of that. That's actual kids in seats. Pre-COVID, we would kind of hang our hat at being around 95.5% of actual ADA as a percentage of actual enrollment. We haven't really gotten back there. We're kind of inching our way that direction. The state recognized this, so they're letting us use a three-year averaging method. So you can see on the slide on the left, there's that real dip in average daily attendance in 21, 22. But the slide on the right, you can see that it really smoothed out our actual funding. So that was a big help. All right, this is the income statement. We separate unrestricted from restricted because the restricted revenue and expenditures are kind of, they're self-balancing accounts. So sometimes we get all the funding in one year, but we really are spending it over multiple years. So the change in fund balance tends to dip up and down on the restricted side. For unrestricted, we had an ending change in fund balance of 6.8 million. All right, let's look at our total revenue. Local control funding formula is 65%. This is total revenue unrestricted and restricted. So I took a look at 1920, and in 1920, local control funding formula was 75%. So we're seeing that more influx of restricted programs with the COVID dollars, you guys are aware.
Oliver?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but you just said something that I have a feeling just went way over my head.
Okay.
You said in 2020, I think you said 1920.
1920, yes. 1920, our local control funding formula was 75% of our total revenues. And now it's down to 65% of our total revenues. And that's because there's so many new restricted programs that they're giving us money for. So back when LCFF was created, they were trying to take away all of the categorical funding. And what we're seeing is a lot of that categorical funding is coming back.
Didn't they take it away in, in 2013 when we went to?
It started, yes. That's when local control funding formula came into play. But it was kind of a slow progression to get up to that formula. And now, now there's a lot of grant funds coming back into the district.
What impact is that having on our ability to control how we spend what we have? Does that make sense, that question?
I mean, with the COVID funding, that was a large influx. It was 60 million. And it allowed us to add a lot of things. And that was, I think, you know, the response, the schools needed to respond to COVID and what was happening with learning loss and whatnot. So it allowed us to build up our programs. And then we're still seeing some kind of replacements for that COVID funding coming down the pike, like learning recovery block grant.
So that's grant money that's coming to replace all of that COVID impact money that, and is it coming in the form of state or federal or a combination?
Combination, but a lot of state right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay. And this is the look at our total expenditures. This is unrestricted and restricted. And something I noted on this slide, this, usually you see this in the form of just unrestricted dollars. With the addition of restricted money, our, the needle didn't really move. We're still spending the lion's share of salaries and benefits expense on salaries and benefits. And that's because with the COVID funding, with a lot of the extra funding, we're still, we're still paying for people out of that funding. We added counselors, reading teachers, class size reduction, site supervision, expanding after-school programs. So, so a lot of that money went towards salary anyway. And this is unrestricted. This is the slide you're used to seeing. So unrestricted and special ed salaries and benefits is 89% of total expenses when you're just looking at unrestricted. All right. My last slide is the COVID, oops, COVID relief funding. This is the last year. You'll see this slide from me because the COVID funding is sunsetting. In 2223, we spent 13 million, 13 million on COVID funding, and we have 10 million remaining. We will spend that by the end of this school year. So items still funded out of COVID. We have counseling, reading pals, replacement technology, like the Viewsonics, and after-school support at the junior high schools, and professional development. So that's all from me, Sharice. Good evening.
I'm gonna, that slide is what number on, is that eight?
That one should be eight, yes.
And you just gave us some additional information on the 2223, or did you give us information on the total that's remaining?
That's really both years. We funded those things out of 2223 and what is still remaining.
And where is the list of what we funded? You, you gave it to me verbally, but I don't see it.
It's, I can provide that to you, but it's not on this slide.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I was looking for it. Yes, if you, if you could.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, I follow on to that. Just knowing that there's one-time money being used for those things and what are we exploring to continue funding those? Where are those funding sources going to be coming from? That's kind of a broader concern, I think, too.
Yeah. And we'll actually, we'll speak to that a lot when we come back to you with first interim in December also, and just talk about the programs that we're continuing on with different grant funding as well, so we can make sure that we have a list of that as well.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I would just pipe in, it's a very strong collaboration between the business service side and the ed services side with Jay and his team, to make sure that everyone's aware of what positions were funded with one-time money, because it's usually somewhat risky for districts to do. So we just need to make sure that we're fully aware of what those positions are. And then can they be funded with alternative funding or do they need to be eliminated at this point?
Thank you. That, that's my big concern. I've been there, done that. And we've got a lot of stuff that's working that we funded with the COVID dollars. So I really, as much lead time as possible to know what we're looking at in the way of what's not going to be funded.
And if it helps, Eileen, we've been having those conversations with ed services since the implementation of COVID.
Yeah, but I wasn't there.
I know. But we can definitely share that as well with you when we come back for our next budget update.
That's my, my biggest concern.
No, you, you should definitely know.
I'm mostly concerned about Kevin Bultman not coming back and telling me that I told you so. I told him we would make it work.
I think you're probably safe at this point, Eileen. Okay.
Just kidding.
So part of year in close, what we do is the last budget that we brought to you was in June. We call it estimated actuals. And that's the column on the left there. And then we have unaudited actuals, which is where we actually ended the year. So we like to make sure that we are doing an analysis to see what the differences were between our last budget and where we ended to make sure that everything looks like we didn't make some huge mistake or anything like that. So amongst those differences, in LCFF revenue, this was due to a prior year adjustment of in-lu taxes. The state did a wonderful thing and helped with our attendance percentage. They gave us some relief. They also did that to the charter schools. So this in-lu payment has to do with charter school property taxes that we passed through. And we didn't know about the factor that they were going to get for attendance until June. So that makes it difficult for us to estimate in May. Yeah, go ahead, Eileen. Oh, okay. Just laughing at this. Okay. Well, good. I like to be entertaining, so that makes me happy. State revenue, that was a difference in the lottery rate increase. Local revenue, we have to do an adjustment per, per the state and per county. So they give us a percentage that basically says this is what your cash would be valued at if we had to close the, everything right now and, you know, turn everything into cash. And so we had to do an adjustment there. Salaries and benefits, those differences were due to overestimation of classified sick time, extra duty and vacation payouts, as well as STIRS and PIRS overestimations. Books and supplies. Books and supplies, we tend to run into this unfortunately every year, especially lately with, with supply chain issues. And so we hope that we're going to get stuff by June 30th, but sometimes that doesn't happen. And so those expenditures get rolled over into the next year. Services were lower due to E-rate switches. We have a huge project. John Vincent, our IT director, just told me today that we got those switches. So that makes me very happy. So that will actually hit this 2324 school year. But that affected our services as well as our books and supplies. And then transfers and contributions, this decrease was due to a little bit of money that we got from the county office. And then as well as an overestimation of benefits. So we do our best, but sometimes we overestimate. We're a little too conservative, so that happened this time. As well as some contracts with other agencies that were lower than we estimated.
Okay, I'm raising my hand again. Transfers and contributions decreased due to a lower contribution to special ed than anticipated.
Correct. So we didn't have to contribute as much as we thought we were going to because we overestimated our expenditures. And we got a little bit of extra money from the SLPA. So that meant less money going from the general fund into special ed in the amount of about $500,000.
Because last year, that encroachment was huge and scary.
It's still huge and scary. We just, it was a little less than we thought it was going to be when we came to you at estimated actuals.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yes, well.
Well, so speaking of that. So our transfers in from other funds, we have the redevelopment agency revenues that we get. That was about 3.7 million, as well as 3% of our developer fees that we collect over the course of the year. Our total was about 1.78 million of collected developer fees, which is down from prior years. So it looks like development's slowing down a little bit, which makes sense because we had huge developer fees coming in for quite some time. This is the part you were talking about, Eileen. So the contributions to restricted programs, we ended at about 25.7 million. And the big chunk of that is special ed. Our contribution was about $20 million. Yep. Okay, so we have, luckily, we have very healthy reserves. Yes, go ahead, Eileen.
I'm not kidding the back of the room again.
That's okay, you're fine.
We've also, in years past, I'm not sure if I remember if there was any last year, but we've made, we've had impact from our food services department. Are we now?
Because of Free Meals for All that started a few years ago, we haven't had to do a contribution to nutrition services for the last few years.
Vince must be happy.
He's doing a great job with the money that he has. And so he's actually surpassing money. We're going to do a big project. He's actually, we, it came to the board, the freezer project that he's doing. That's because of the money that we're getting and the amazing program that he's running. So no, we didn't have to do a contribution.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, so this shows a breakdown of our ending, our unrestricted ending balance by year by comparison. Just so you can see, so as you can see, we have very healthy reserves, which is fantastic. I don't know how many of you are aware of this, but on Monday, they actually delayed taxes again. So the due date is November now, which makes it hard for the state to know exactly what revenues are going to look like. So this will help us a lot to weather any storms that we might have to deal with. Okay. And then this is just a breakdown of our restricted ending fund balance by program. So that Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, those will be spent by the end of this year. Educator Effectiveness, that we are using over the course of four years. And it will help to maintain our counselors that we were just talking about. So these are the funds that we're looking at when we're thinking about long-term, what, what programs can we continue and maintain out of the staff that we added with the COVID funds? Okay. And then you guys have seen this chart before as well. Cash, we have very healthy cash as well right now, which is great in case the state has deferrals. It has pretty much the same pattern every year. So we have a dip in November and March, and then we get an influx of property taxes in December and April. All right, so conclusions. Revenue was driven by ADA, or revenue that is driven by ADA has been more stable. Luckily, this last year, they enacted the three-year averaging funding method. So there's two, there's three now, different funding methods that you can have with ADA. It's either prior year, current year, or a three-year average, yes.
I'm not kidding again.
You're good.
Having a little bit of background in attendance, I know that, yes, we were at 95 when COVID hit, and that was wonderful. It was very, I mean, it was very good. It was, as far as comparing us to the state, it was very good. And I know that it's gone down.
Yes.
And we're at 93 now. But we need to be up. How much do we lose between the 93% and the 95 that we used to have, even with the?
So if you're talking about about, about a 2% change?
Yes, yes.
It would be probably about 2.7 million would be the, the loss of funding that we would have. Yes, so we.
Is it easy to, in a charter, a graph or something, show, you know, like how many, how many kids we're talking about? Because this is, this is kids that parents are sending to school every day instead of missing once a month or miss. Is there a way of providing that to us in a chart form so that we know how important? And not only we, the five of us, but the attendance clerks at the school sites, they pay a lot of attention to why it's important to get the kids to school. Not only because of their educational impact.
Correct.
But I think it's important to help them by knowing, you know, all those phone calls you make and, and all of those, you know, alarm clocks that you provide.
Right.
Makes a big difference because it makes what that child is coming to school for flourish.
Yeah.
The classroom is, is.
The effects that would occur if we don't.
Absolutely. And I think that the classified employees having that information helps. It's also, at least I used to use it, as a tool when talking to parents about, you know, the importance of attending every day or at least not missing one or two days in a month. Because parents get it when you talk about the money not going to the classroom.
The impact, yeah.
Yeah, they do. And it matters.
Yeah.
So it's an important bit of information to get to our staff as well as to our parents.
Yeah.
Mr. Robinson, can I just clarify? You're talking about a graph of what? Can you further explain, just so we can provide you the correct information?
Yeah. When, when attendance goes up, when the, when the, when a school runs an attendance data report, you, you will see fluctuations in like times of year when there's more kids present than times of year when a lot of our, not a lot. Some of our population go to Mexico for three or four weeks in January. And we could see that reflected on the graph that I would run at the school site, showing that absences were up. And they tend to be up during, right after probable failure notices come out. And they tend to increase, absences increase at the end when students have figured out, I'm not going to pass that class anyway, so I'm not going.
So for clarification, so if I'm hearing you correctly, basically the attendance percentage district-wide for every month and Aries and track that over multiple years to see when the dips and the higher rates are?
Yes, yes, that's what I used to do, and that would be wonderful.
Okay, so the other things that we're thinking about is we're going to be continuing to spend down the remaining COVID-19 relief dollars, as Marie mentioned earlier. 2324 will be the last year of those expenditures. As you saw a couple of slides ago, we have larger restricted, restricted ending fund balances, which will help us to maintain some of our program. As I said, we're looking with ed services to keep learning recovery, social emotional learning, supports that we've implemented the last few years. And then, just so you guys know, we will come back to you in January with the audited financial statements. And that's all I have for you. So any questions? Yep.
Oh my gosh, old age, just sit in. I have no idea the question I was going to ask.
I have that problem too, but it's not old age. I don't have questions.
Okay, we will need approval of the unaudited actuals. And Eileen, if you think of your question, you can always email me later. Okay.
I see no public comment on this, so I will ask the board if there's a motion.
Yeah, I'm, oh, you got one, here we go.
It's because I stepped away.
Glad I remembered.
Yes.
Dedicated grant writers at one point, do we still have?
Your mic's not on. Your mic's not on.
We had dedicated grant writers. Do we still have dedicated grant writers plural?
Yeah, Michelle Bunch.
Oh, Michelle is still, yeah.
Yes.
Very good. Okay.
I believe we have a motion by Mr. Lando to approve the.
Yes, that.
Unaudited actuals.
I'll second that motion.
Fantastic. Any further discussion? Our last vote was unanimous, so all those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, it passes, thank you. Moving on to 9.2.2, Discussion Action Resolution Number 1619-23, the GAN appropriations limit.
Yes, the GAN limit. So every year after approval of the unaudited actuals, we bring the GAN limit to you. It's generated by the SAC system, and it was part of the big unaudited actuals report that was included in your packet. The GAN's really a formality at this point, so it doesn't really tell us anything. It was established in 1979 to constrain the growth in state and local government, but it doesn't really do that at this point. So anyway, we are asking for approval of the GAN, and there is a resolution in there for you as well.
I think I've moved this item in the past, and I'm proud to do so again. I move Resolution Number 1619-23, the GAN appropriations limit.
I'll second that motion.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor? Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. 9.2.3 is Discussion Action, how do you even pronounce that acronym? AMIM?
AMIM.
AMIM. Discretionary Block Grant Expenditure Plan.
Yes, so the AMIM for short, which is the Arts, Music, Instructional Materials.
Oh, that.
Discretionary Block Grant was approved with AB 181. And then there was some changes related to AB 185 when the amount was changed, so taken back from the state as a way to have some budget savings at the state. So we finally have our final appropriated value, which is 7.1 million. So this plan does require board approval at a public meeting. It can be spent on four things, which is standards-aligned professional development and instructional materials, diverse book collections, any operational expense or cost, which is the discretionary portion, or any COVID-19-related expenditures. So in front of you this evening is a proposed discretionary block grant plan, which involves equipment replacement at our Center for Fine Arts at the CFA, the entry embezzler system to be implemented at all sites. Right now, we currently only have it at Parkview and Emma Wilson. The other piece in here is increases to electricity. We've seen astronomical increases to PG&E the last several years. Just between 2021 and 2122, it was up 700,000, and it was up another, another 1.3 this last year. So we're looking to use some of these monies to kind of offset that increase temporarily in our budget. The other piece that we'd like to look at is 1350 East Laston Avenue. Our tenants in the second building vacated on September 30th, so we no longer have tenants in that building. So we need to go into that building. We need to paint flooring, pull cabling, redo the ADA entrance, so it's the primary entrance out front, to get that up and running to be used as a facility for TCU Unified. And then lastly, 3.3 million allocated to our special ed program. So that program is flourishing, the large student population. Last year it was up 7%. This year it's up 9.3%. The number I got as of this morning was 2,188 students of our 12,000 students, our students with IEPs. So looking to earmark this 3.3 million to offset some of those expanded programs for those new students in our district. And that's the 7.1 million that will be spent over the next three years before the 26 deadline, June 26 deadline.
Going back to, you mentioned a PG&E bill going up a lot?
Yes.
You said that you gave a dollar amount that it had increased. Do you have any percentages where it's up by blockity-block percent?
Oh, it's between 15 and 20%.
Over the last how many years?
Two years. It's significant. And what we're seeing is time of day billing definitely impacts school systems. So between, I think it's 3:00 PM and 8:00 PM is like peak time. And you think, oh, school's not in session, except we have after-school programs at almost all of our sites. And we have sports that are also at our facilities. And so our facilities are really utilized, sunrise, sundown, and then some. And so that is definitely playing a role in this as well. And just PG&E rights hikes themselves, those have gone up 7% annually for the last couple of years. And I know they're going to the Public Utility Commission again, I believe in January, for additional increases.
Do we try to manage the, I'm assuming we have some protocols for trying to manage that? So for example, if the after-school was program was going on over here in this building, you know, and you were using maybe one room of this building over here, and, you know, you, there's some thought being given to this. We're not just wantonly, you know, just running everything until.
Correct. We have an energy management system that has set points for each classrooms and time of day so that it's not running 24/7, that they end at a certain time. They come, they kick on in the morning, whether that's AC or heating as we get into the cooler months. So that's all regulated through our energy management system. Yes. And the other piece is we are running programs longer into the summer as well, which historically we haven't done, other than the exception of ESY. And now we're running our after-school programs all June for nine hours a day.
And does any of that get allocated over to after-school program costs?
This last year, we did allocate a portion of it, yes.
Because the people funding, I guess in some cases that would be us, after-school programs would want to know that, that that cost was there.
Yes, and we did do that this last year.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Daley, do you know, and this is really just a kind of offhand question, is there ever a educational presence at the Public Utility Commission meetings talking about this kind of thing, addressing, you know, PG&E's normal and wanton money grabs?
I do not know the answer to that.
I could put it on the agenda yet, because I got to fill out a form, but that might be something to be interested in doing at some point later down the road.
And I can look into seeing whether any of the professional organizations are doing that CASBO access.
Thank you.
Yeah, some kind of advocacy, or even if, again, if we could do like a letter of, yeah. The more, the more voices we can put out there for advocacy, the better.
We live and hope that someday the PUC will stand up to them.
I don't have any faith in that.
It seems like the CSBA might have some regulatory lobbyist or something like that who would supposed to be paying attention to that kind of thing.
They certainly have lobbyists, and I can ask whether or not this is something that's on their radar. But it is impacting everyone, so I'm sure it is.
So just for clarification, you're asking for us to approve this expenditure plan?
That is correct, and then we can spend accordingly.
Okay. Seeing that there's no public comment on this item, do we have a motion from the board?
I move approval of the AMIM discretionary block grant expenditure plan.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have further discussion, board? Yes.
Please. So the first word in AMIM is arts, correct? And the specific text from the CDE talks about AMIM grant funding being used for visual performing arts, oral language, math, science, English language, arts, history, social studies, ethnic studies, financial literacy, media literacy, computer science. I say that because I know we need these things. It is really frustrating that we're spending $7 million of an arts grant with 50,000 of it going to arts.
So the voters last November passed Prop 28, and that's where we're getting our arts and music money. So at the elementary level, we hired, we got rid of sub-based prep time for our elementary teachers. So at the elementary level, we hired, we got rid of sub-based prep time for our elementary teachers and we hired additional fine arts and music prep providers so that students are with a certificated positional teacher throughout the day versus having a sub come into the classroom when the teacher is taking prep. So a lot of the dollars went there. And then additionally, at the junior high and high school, we have three years to spend the current year allocation. So at the junior high and high school, they're spending some on supplies right now, as you saw with our Marsh program, not the supplies here tonight, but as the Marsh alluded to it. And then I know that at the secondary sites, they've allocated money to get additional consultants to help with like marching band and the choreography related to that. So that's really where the arts and music money is coming from, is an alternative pot, and that pot is ongoing. That money is in, that money is in statute until the voters say, we want to put it back on the ballot to say, no, we don't want that anymore. This money is one-time, so I feel like it's more fruitful from an ongoing program perspective that we use ongoing dollars for that versus one-time dollars.
I hear that and I understand we have the operating costs and we need to cover them. I just, especially if we're talking about the ethnic studies, you know, plan in the future. It'd be nice to have a funding plan to make that a really robust program. At any rate, I'm just putting it out there so it's on the record. I know what we're doing. Thank you.
What's the timeline on, on needing to approve this?
Well, the dollars have to be spent by June of twenty-six, but no dollars can be spent until the, the plan has been approved by the governing board.
Madam President? Just making note of the fact that our entry camera and buzzer system is one of the items on this list.
Yep. Yeah, and you said for all schools that need them?
Yes, this three hundred seventy-five thousand will get us an entryway camera and buzzer system for all of our school sites.
And that'll help us, that basically offsets what costs would have been gone from, come from our bond.
Correct. Yeah.
I'm, I'm still mulling over something that, that you said, Mr. Lando, about, you know, just even how small of a chunk could be carved out for additional consulting services for like the ethnic studies program? If it was something that was, would be beneficial. As a one-time, I mean, that's a one-time expense also, or could be a one-time expense. Do you have any, do you want to expand on those thoughts or ideas anymore?
Not at the moment, I'm feeling fairly bad to not talking stuff about this ahead of time and just bringing it on you now.
Same, sometimes there's lots of moving pieces and like this list makes sense to me, for sure. But also, you know, knowing that there's, there's other things that we could also be doing with it. And it is extremely infuriating that we need to allocate three million dollars towards electricity. So that's where I would say is where we should be frustrated the most. Or at least I am. Okay, well, if there's no other points of discussion for now, we can vote.
We were unanimous with a voice last.
We were. Okay, well, let's go ahead and do, actually, just in case, I want to do a roll call vote because there may be some no's. Mr. Tennis, I'll start with you, since you made the motion.
Tennis, aye.
Uh. Dolby, aye.
Robinson, aye.
Conken, aye.
Lando, aye reluctantly.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move onward to nine point three. Nine point three point one, sorry, let me get closer to my mic. It's not as sensitive tonight, which is nice, but also I forget that I need to be closer. Nine point three point one, Discussion Action Approval of Resolution Number one six two zero dash two three, Elimination of Classified Services and Ordering Layoffs in the Classified Service for the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four school year.
Thank you, President Dolby, it's a long title. Anytime the district no longer needs or no longer has the funds for a classified position, we bring a resolution to the board to approve the elimination of that position. So our recommendation is for the, to adopt a resolution to eliminate the single position. I would like the board to note that it is a vacant position and we bring these to you each time we either no longer need it or no longer have the funds to support the position.
So since the funds are no longer available for the position, those funds are being utilized elsewhere, I'm assuming?
Correct. And, and again, I want to note that the, the position is vacant. As you can see in the, the adoption, the resolution document, it's an aid position at one of our elementary schools.
If the position wasn't vacant, but then there was no funds for it, what, what's the protocol then? Do we just make it work?
Well, we'd get a hold of Michelle Bunch and write a grant. We're always looking for options, right, always trying to, because if the position is there and it's vacant and it's viable and serving kids, we're going to figure out a way to make it happen.
So this position, would you say this position is needed?
If it were.
But not filled? So, right, it's not filled, people haven't applied to have these point, it's not even a full-time position, but, but so, so is there still a need for this at the school?
It's my understanding that there's not a need for this position.
Okay. Thank you.
I was looking at Mr. Sullivan to see if he had any other answer, but it's my understanding.
Okay.
In this situation, it's not needed.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Public comment? I've been signed up. Motion?
I move approval of Resolution Number sixteen twenty dash twenty-three.
A second. Okay, we have a motion by Member Robinson and a second by Member Conken. We were unanimous last time, this time we can, any further discussion? No, okay. Voice vote is fine, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No opposed, so it passes unanimously. And thank you. Onward to nine point four point one, this is under Board Discussion Action Approval of the Revised slash Updated slash New Board Policies.
So Board Policy six one seven four, Education for English Learners, was brought forward at our October fourth board meeting and it is now back for a second reading and approval.
We already asked questions about this last time, I do believe.
I asked a question between meetings about who at the district level is in charge of administering the policy and was there a second part?
This particular policy will be, I think I helped answer that question.
Yes, you did.
This particular, and Mr. Sullivan obviously could speak to this too, but this policy here is overseen by Ed Services and our team. Mr. Sullivan also oversees our E L programs and we also have two E L coaches that we have that are teachers on special assignment that oversees our E L programs, that helps supports our elementaries and our secondary sites on the, on these programs. And then each one of our site administrators also making sure that this policy is being followed.
Anna Mayfield and Kalen Rice are the, kind of the coordinators that Jay was referring to, the TOSAs that work with high schools, down to the elementary schools with implementation of this policy.
There's a lot of meat in this policy, it's.
They're, they are busy.
Yes.
And, and with that said, they also have some support with some of those things, like we have, we call them blue jacket positions to kind of monitor student progress on their LPAC scores. So there's other folks involved with kind of monitoring some of these things as well and that's built into our budget with some of those positions.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions for clarification and no public comment, do we have a motion?
Sure. I move adoption of Board Policy six one seven four.
I'll second.
All right.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Lando and a second by Ms. Robinson. All those in favor of adoption, say, say aye.
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 Opposed? It passes unanimously. Nine point four point two is Discussion Action Setting the Date of Annual Organizational Meeting of the Governing Board of the Chico Unified School District, Proposed Date December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. You guys keep giving me these long titles.
I know it. This is the time of the year when we have to set our organizational meeting. At the organizational meeting, the board will determine the officers of the board. You will set the meeting dates and times and the agenda format. So we are proposing that that would be on December thirteenth.
The second Wednesday of the month.
Due to the winter break.
As opposed to the sixth? Just because.
So typically, we only have one board meeting in December and we put it in that second week and this, I believe, has to be set after a certain time in December.
Okay. Got it. Great. I don't have any more questions, anybody else? No? No public comments? Motion, I'll call for a motion.
I move approval of this item.
Second.
We have a, a motion. Yeah, we have a motion by Mr. Tennis and a second by Mr. Lando.
Yes.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
None opposed, it passes. Moving on to, where's my numbers? Nine point four point three, Discussion Action of Chico Unified School District Board Self-Evaluation. Presented by. You go ahead.
I can speak to that.
Yeah.
The board this year has asked that we get input from the public and that would be our staff and parents and other members that are interested in, in providing input. So we put together a draft survey and that is in your packet. And we would send this out electronically and gather input and then have this ready to come back to the board for discussion at our November meeting.
Would we get the results before or at the same time as we submit our own self-evaluation? I know we talked about like what a timeline would look like to try to, does that make sense?
So the results would need to come forward at the board meeting and so that everybody gets the information at the same time.
Okay. And that would be at the same time that we have already done our own self-evaluation? Is that right?
So the community would be one piece and then you guys could, and that's up to the board, do your own self-evaluation as you have done those in the past.
Yeah, I think I was working under the assumption that we would still do that aspect of it, yeah. I like that the survey succinctly puts together what the board does and what our charge is and kind of what we don't do. Are there any other questions or comments? No public comment, do we have a motion?
I'll move approval of the draft community survey, board community survey.
I'll second that.
I think it's a good place to start, we've never done this before, at least that I know of. So it'll be interesting and I think insightful to put it out there and see what kind of response we get. I think it'll be insightful to see the number of responses that we get, how many people want to give us feedback on how we're doing. And so, yeah, is it going to be pushed out just like we would any other type of community survey? Same channels and all?
Yes.
At the site level as well as at the district level?
We can send it out to all of our staff, we can post on social media, we can send it out to all of our parents. The social media link would be the way for community members that wanted, that maybe didn't have children in the system to have access.
Yeah, okay, and media in general?
Correct.
To like enterprise record and all those good folks. Yeah. I assume that Erica's gonna plug it into all of her network.
You would assume correctly.
Yeah. All right, any further discussion or questions? All right, let's vote. All those in favor of moving forward with this, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, it passes unanimously, great, thank you. And moving on to the next item, I'm fading. Items from the floor, do we have any additional speakers for items from the floor? None from our community that are present, okay. Number eleven is Board Member Request to Agendize Item. We have eleven point one, Discussion Action Proposal for Student Citizenship and Respect for Authority. Mr. Tennis?
Thank you. Let me just pull my sheet up here for a second, sorry. Yeah, I, I have heard from senior staff cabinet, I guess, recently in conversations that teachers have expressed concern about safety on campus relative to student behaviors. I've heard comments about social media and people filming dramatic events that occur on campus. I've heard of violent instances, sometimes gang-related, where cameras come out and, and large audiences amass to observe, you know, altercations. I've heard of police coming on campus and having students obstruct them as they're trying to create safe campuses. I think this kind of thing is frankly toxic. It disagrees with my sensibilities for wanting to have an orderly atmosphere for learning and citizenship at schools. Additionally, our LPAC goals are very clear that we want to have, you know, healthy, positive campus climates and this sort of like, you know, sort of mob mentality type stuff, you know, yelling, cursing at police is against that. So I think that we need to understand the extent of the problem and make sure that we're doing everything we can to encourage a positive school climate and good citizenship to create a good learning environment. So, and, and at the heart of it all is safety. We want safety for staff, safety for our students. We need to fulfill our mission. And I want to kind of hone in on the things that might be diminishing from that.
Do you have a succinct motion?
I move that we place an item on a future agenda to discuss student citizenship and disciplinary measures and other tools we might employ to foster a positive and productive school climate.
I'll second. I was giving Erica time to type it. Okay, so since this would be a future discussion item, this is not the time to necessarily flush it out now as a discussion. But I think that it's appropriate to, you know, add any small thoughts if needed, or we could just move right into a vote.
Sure, may I? If you all would go back to the minutes of our last meeting where we talked about, where Caitlin brought up something very similar regarding student behavior and safety in the context of lunchtime. I think all those exact same issues can be brought up here. So you already got me on, on, on record to follow that. I'd say it's a good idea regardless of who brings it up.
And I think too, to the point, to Mr. Tennis's point, that it's, it's, it really is falling under the time that we're responsible for these kids. So, yeah. Is there any, any more direction from the staff needed for this item, or you can always circle back with?
Yeah, I think as we start putting this together, we'll need to get some more specifics. But from what I'm hearing is But from what I'm hearing is a synopsis of the type of issues that we're facing on campus, the behavior issues that we see most often, and we can look through discipline records, our Ares to look at that, as well as the tools that we have to utilize to address those behaviors.
Yes. Ms. Daley, that your last statement was what I raised my hand for is, I want to see some brilliant ideas about solutions.
We would be open to hearing some additional ones, for sure.
And I, so also, while I value hard qualitative, quantitative data, I do think that there are some, some concerns that don't get translated into Ares very well. So if there's anecdotal things to share, I think that that would be valuable as well. Teacher experiences and concerns, or staff, I should say, staff experiences and concerns, student experiences and concerns. What are you hearing from kids when you're visiting campuses? Did you have a comment?
We do. We do school climate surveys, and we can share that data as well.
I had one other concern is that we take a look at anything that might turn into a negotiable item issue in dealing with this subject matter, change in working conditions, change in, you know, for both of our bargaining units.
Since this is a truly itemized, that's not the right word, this is an agenda item, we can take public comment if you would like to speak.
So I spend a lot of time on campuses, and there is definitely, I feel there's levels of disrespect that need to be fixed and approved upon, but I feel it's not necessarily something completely at the school level that can be fixed, because the big problem is social media. Kids love social media, they love their Snapchat, their TikTok, all the things. And that's like, the goal on social media is like to go viral. Kids like are drawn to that, that's what they're focused on, that's what they want. They want to be the next best thing, they want to be influencers, whatever. So just sitting here and thinking, like, do we focus on teaching kids social media, like positive social media behaviors? Like I feel, it doesn't happen at home, well, let's just be honest, it doesn't happen in every household, those discussions about social media and what makes good social media and bad social media, and how you should act on social media. If it's not happening at home, granted, it's not the school's responsibility to teach that, but I also feel like it's a pretty important thing to be discussing with our kids, is the social media. And that, and like, when you put something on the internet, it's there, like it does not go away. That's like the day and age we live now, and I feel there needs to be that educational component for our students, especially our junior high students and our high school students, but also starting at elementary too. Like just finding ways to start those conversations, so when they get to that age, when they have a phone, when they have that social media, they're prepared for it. Because again, it doesn't happen in every household, kids, they know how to be sneaky too, let's be honest. You think you have an honest kid, and you know they do something that surprises you. And so I think that needs to be included in any type of discussion that we have, is like, what can we do at the school level to help prepare our students for this world of social media that we're in now? That's it. Thank you.
Alrighty, let's vote. All those in favor for agendizing this on a future item? Yep, that's what I'm trying to say, that's fine. Please say aye.
Aye.
Please help get me out of here. It's unanimous, it passes, thank you. And there's no additional items for agendizing for the future at this time, so I will call for a motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
All right, we have, we have a motion, so we will adjourn. Thank you.[1795.54]